Okay, ladies and gentlemen, welcome to February twenty-sixth edition of the Midwest City Council. Uh, call this meeting to order. Uh, I would ask that you, uh, stand and, uh, ask Von Sullivan to come down and offer our invocation, and I'll lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
Gracious Lord, we thank you so much for the, this day and this occasion of this meeting, Lord. We thank you for these men and women and their, their service to this community. Father, I, I ask your wisdom and discernment be upon them tonight, and, uh, the decisions that are before them, that they'll, they'll be good decisions based on the good of the whole. Father, we thank you and give you the glory and the honor for this, uh, wonderful community that we enjoy, this great place to live, work, and raise our families. Thank you for this great nation, Father, and the men and women who are willing to defend it, uh, as we speak tonight. Give them peace and comfort and protection. Thank you so much for your son, Jesus. Father, the sacrifice that you both made on our behalf. Thank you for loving us, Father. Thank you for loving us, Jesus. We ask all these favors in your holy name. Amen.
Please follow me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. Well, we didn't get a chance to go around the room upstairs, but is, are there any community-related announcements this evening? Councilwoman Eads, you have anything?
Mom is coming at Midwest City High School, um, to be back for her spring break, and so we can do Tuesday, first break, so I think that's where she may have, um, her bowl, or we can, we can make plans to tell, so we can have a lot show, and racing is difficult to us.
We've got a couple more. Okay, go ahead.
So, uh, swim passes go on sale Friday, March first. You can imagine thinking about going swimming on Friday, March first. Uh, and also, um, the city is participating, uh, in a, uh, in the tree board, uh, in a giveaway of two hundred free trees. Uh, there'll be, uh, five gallon varieties, uh, of red buds, white buds, Chinese pistachio, autumn blaze, maple, and purple robe locust. And so, the giveaway is gonna be done online, and so, starting at, on Monday, uh, there'll be a, uh, link on our website, uh, where you can go to, um, register, uh, to, uh, receive a tree, and one tree per household, and only available to residents of Midwest City. So, uh, if you're looking to do a little bit of landscaping, you might wanna check that out on Monday, eight P.M.
Mayor, I have something, uh, since you brought up swimming. A week ago Saturday, the Carl Albert girls won the first state championship that they'd ever had in swimming. In, I don't have any kids on the team now. I had an exchange student several years ago, about six years ago, and back then, they were just glad to get one person qualified, and the girls took state, which is a huge accomplishment.
That's, uh, thank you for, I, I do remember reading that. Anything else, anyone? Okay, with that being said...
I did have one more shout-out, actually.
Yes.
Since you brought that up.
That should be undone.
It's her daughter now, so she has to pose. I was surprised you didn't say something, 'cause I knew about it.
I'm not even talking about my daughter. Jarman Middle School, academic team, placed fourth in the regionals and has qualified to go to state again.
Oh, wow.
And, um, they have the same coach that was on there whenever my daughter was doing it, um, so, I wanted to give a shout-out to them.
Right.
So, they're going to state.
Anybody else? Going once, going twice. But we do have a, a special guest in the audience tonight. El Reno Mayor Matt White is here, uh, representing District Eight from Oklahoma Municipal League, and we've got a special award. Uh, Mr. White, could you meet, uh, meet us down front?
Yeah. Thank you, Mayor. Appreciate being here, and, uh, the fine city of Midwest City. Come on up, and, Mr. White. And I appreciate, uh, before we get into this, thanks, OML, thanks for all the, uh, the things that Midwest City contributes to that. I've served on several boards with Matt, uh, Mayor Dukes, and, and really appreciate that, Mr. Henderson, so, we, uh, really appreciate everything that Midwest City does for O- Oklahoma Municipal League. Uh, we're here to, uh, uh, give an award out tonight, and Mayor, I think that, uh, you, along with all the other councilmen, I always look at these things like, uh, we come up here, we do a lot of, uh, important things, that we do, conduct a lot of business, we, uh, buy a lot of water lines, buy a lot of, uh, trucks, and police cars, and fire trucks, and I call that investments, and we invest in, in our community with that. But I think our greatest investment, I think you'll agree with me, and, uh, by, by the way that you've all, uh, we've always committed to, uh, to our employees, the best investment, I think, the citizens, uh, uh, have, that, that we have the availability to make as, uh, council members and as managers, are our people. And, uh, our people are the most important thing that we have, and, uh, tonight, we recognize, uh, Mr. Jerry White.
Thank you.
You're no relation, are you?
No.
Well, we don't know. If you don't cash anything, we'll get with you later.
I might be.
Mr. White, you have, uh, twenty-five years of service, is that correct?
Uh, probably more like thirty-five.
Thirty-five years of service.
Yes.
Thirty-five years of service.
Yes.
So, congratulations from Oklahoma Municipal League.
Thank you.
And, uh, it's, it's quite an accomplishment. You're the backbone, uh, you and employees like you that have had served us, uh, to our community and helped our community grow, a bit of part of it, and it's kinda one of those things, I know when we walk down the street, and, uh, you take a, a lot of pride in what you do, so appreciate you and, and that.
Well, this, this is a great community. I've served on the board of Lexington, Del City, was asked to serve on the board of Midwest Oklahoma City, but, uh, this is where I live, this is the community I love, and I love the people here, and I think this is one of the greatest communities in the state of Oklahoma. The state of Oklahoma can be proud of our people, because we are the people that have been conservative to lead and fill this nation with a great, great representative. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. White.
Now, I just wanna point out that Mr. White is a volunteer, volunteered to be on our plumbing board for the last thirty-five years, and, uh, uh, obviously, that's an unpaid position, so thank you for your commitment to our community, Mr. White.
Well, thank you. It's great to be here.
Get a picture right there. Matt, you want to turn right here?
Okay.
Here's a pen, too, we'd like to present to you, too, Mr. White.
Thank you.
For your service, thank you so much.
Thank you.
I will tell you that, uh, and all the council members will attest, that, uh, getting people to serve, we've got seventeen different boards and commissions in the city of Midwest City, and getting people that are interested enough and, uh, uh, to, uh, come forward and serve on these commissions and boards is quite a challenge, and, Mr. White, again, thank you for your service to our community, and, uh, and we hope that you stick around a little bit longer. Thank you. Okay, with that being said, we'll move into the consent agenda of our agenda. These items are placed on the consent agenda. So the council, by unanimous consent, can approve routine agenda items by one motion. If any item poses or does not meet with the approval of the council or members of the audience, wish to discuss an item to be removed and heard in regular order. That being said, Chair would entertain a motion.
Motion to approve the council agenda, the, uh, excuse me, consent agenda.
I have a motion to approve. I have a second.
Second.
I have a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstention, motion carries. Uh, item, uh, discussion item one is, uh, we need to pull that for, uh, and, uh, and bring it back at a di- different date. No actions required on discussion item one. We'll move into, uh, discussion item two.
This is discussion consideration of terminating the facility lease contract with the Oklahoma Spartans Youth Organization for use of Telstar North Football Complex in Telstar North Park, effective February twenty-sixth, twenty nineteen, due to breaches associated with the facility lease and services contract. Mr. Sullivan?
Mayor and council, uh, believe everything's there in your agenda packet. Be glad to answer any questions.
Any questions, Ms. Sullivan?
I have a question. Um, Von, I noticed when I was looking at this, uh, I think it's the financial, and it was saying that, uh, he's using his personal money, is that correct?
We, we don't know that.
Okay.
Ms. Price. Alan, I do, I don't, we don't know what, we don't know, I can't confirm or deny that, no ma'am.
Um, and also, um, I noticed that there was not a charge, um, at the gates. Is, I mean, who would know this information, Mr.?
There, the, the financial report has all zeros on it, so evidently, there were no collections at the gate or, or fee, league fees of any kind, according to his financial report.
So, it, does people, has that ever been where, I guess, the organization used their own money, is, does that happen sometime, or what? I just, I'm just curious, I, I need to know. Okay.
I can't, I can't answer that.
Now, listen, I, I understand that there was a flyer sent to, uh, can he come up here and talk? Is this Mr. Don Williams? Could you come over?
Mrs. Allen, thanks for, uh, giving me a chance to speak. I've been waiting for this for a couple months now.
I, I would like to say this, because the question I'm asking, Mr. Von Sullivan, he, what's the name, because I know that it's more or less, uh, you with this financial report, there was nothing, uh, reported, so I wanted to know what was going on, because the information I'm, I'm seeing here is, I, I need some, some clarity on this.
Could you go ahead and state your name and address, and what, and, uh, the organization you're with?
Dionne Williams, with Oklahoma Spartans Youth Club, president of the Spartans Youth Club, also the commissioner of the Mid- Middel Youth Football League. Um, this is, season of twenty-seventeen, August of twenty-seventeen through November of twenty-seventeen. Um, let's start from the beginning. Twenty-fifteen, we received a part, the contract for the part. We didn't get the lease to the part till August, where all the leads have already full, filled up, so we could not, uh, have a lead in twenty-fifteen. Fran and, uh, Von were aware of that, 'cause of the late of us receiving the, the part. We did a Wednesday call-out, we hosted three tournaments during that season, turned in a financial statement at the end of that, that season. Going into the next season, I met with Fran, Fran and, uh, Von, told them that I'm gonna rough some feathers, I'm just gonna let you know, I'm gonna do things a little different from what's been done in Oklahoma City in youth football. That's background checks on coaches, making all my coaches get heads-up certified, because at the same time, we're in the middle of the concussion movie coming out, and the cutback on youth football. I wanted to slow down the game, I wanted to cut back. My son, that's in junior high now, was playing forty games a, a year, and, within three months. If you take that, and he was playing running back, he was carrying the ball twenty-two times a game, forty games. I wanted to cut that back, to kids play no more than twelve games a season, and it was up to the coaches and parents on any open t- any open tournaments. But we would only have twelves, twelve games, and the kids could only practice up to six hours a week. And that's full contact practice, they could practice shorts or whatever. Going forward, um, Moore, I worked out a, we worked out a partnership with Moore, Moore didn't charge gate for the cons- uh, for entry. Great. I, I told Von and, uh, Fran at that time, if you're looking for this, it'd be a money situation, you got the wrong guy. Football saved my life, and I'm gonna pay that back to my community. Like we said earlier, the best investment you can have is the people, I believe the best investment you can have are the kids, 'cause of the future. Going forward, we came to the next meeting of last year, August twenty-eighth, and I've, I, at that point, we were charged a fifteen-dollar lead fee, which was three times, three and a half times less than any other lead in Oklahoma City area. That refurbished helmet costs forty-five dollars for one helmet, so I was already coming out of pocket just to provide kids with helmets that were certified. Mrs., uh, Eads, at that time in August, um, she, she questioned the report of, well, the amounts, why does it just equal out, like turf, this and that? At that point in time, I was directed by Christie, is, is it Christie, right? Christie, that, um, do not count none of my personal money.
Christie, will you come up to the microphone?
Yeah.
I'mma, I'mma finish my statement, and then...
Okay.
At that time, I gave her a en- big envelope in D- December, full of all my personal expen- personal expenses, where I've paid for the scoreboards at Telstar, concession stands, items and all that, going, helmets, equipment, going forward. Also, coaches heads-up certification through, uh, USA Football, background checks for coaches, all that was ca- came out of my own personal pocket and my wife's funds. We left that meeting at the twenty-eighth, on August twenty-eighth, our season was about to start, like, ten days later, and it was, uh, Mr. Moore that told me to calm down, he said, "We, we appreciate you volunteering and everything," but mine was already set. Football's gonna be free in the Middel. If I have to sponsor it, I'm gonna sponsor it, there, we will not charge gate, I would pay sixty dollars a day, get free hot dogs and free water for my kids to come out and play, and I'll, I'll pay for it, but I'm gonna put the people that I want in those organizations. People that I know that I can trust with fifteen thousand dollars worth of equipment that they're gonna keep up with. So, all the organizations, I started putting the right people in those organizations to keep track of that equipment. Now, OS, OSYO could bought that equipment, but OSYO also funds track, basketball, social events, cheer, baseball, so any donation that I would've made straight to OSYO would've been split with all those other items. But I, me personally, my personal tie is with football. My youngest son is eight, he doesn't even play football. My oldest daughter, she's in high, uh, high school, she cheers, she's not up at Telstar. My son's in junior high. Last August, I missed his first football game, going, sitting in this meeting, arguing about what I did with my money compared to paying, only making people pay fifteen dollars for entry. Um, going forward, I think it was December, I sent Fran a spring, spring football flyer, which, uh, on the flyer states, there's, there's no, there's no fee. Uh, teams pay for their referees, we didn't have to team, we don't have to ten, ten ninety-nine referees, teams are, teams pay them directly. I took that advice from Ms. Christie, she said if I, if I pay referees, I have to ten ninety-nine them, but if the teams pay them, that's, that's up to them. Tournaments, I started letting the teams and organization host tournaments, so they can build money, take the kids off the corner that are helmet driving and this and that. You, you host a tournament, it's up to you to run the tournament, if you set the prices, that's on you, but lead fees and all that was covered by me.
So, was there any gate fees that was...
No gate fees, no concession. Only time concession was ran and charged that concession was during tournaments or any events held by a different organi- by a different organization for fundraising. And I said, we had lead games, I offered, I bought eighty, eighty hot dogs for the first, first games at six-thirty, I bought another eighty hot dogs out of my own pocket for the seven-thirty games, fed all the kids hot dogs, hamburger, hot dog buns, and water.
I'm sorry, I, I, I hate this thing.
Misunderstanding, 'cause when we talked about him, his personal items, it was in discussion of equipment, such as, say, he uses his own personal mower to mow the fields, then obviously, he would not list that mower as an asset of the club, because when the club, if it dissolves at some point, then the ci- those assets belong to the city, so you would not list your personal assets on the club's financial statements if you're just loaning them to the club to use to run the org- to help with the organization, say, if the organization, like I said, if this organization doesn't have a mower, and so you lo- you, you use your own. And, the difference is, if he, he's making donations to the club to run the facility, those should have been put into a club bank account, and those should have been reported on those statements, so that we could see what, what he's donating, and what he's do- what's being done with the club's resources, who, who's making the donations, where's the, where are the donations going? Those are the kinda things we want to see in these statements, and the accountability that we need to be giving to the citizens, since we're using public property here.
With that being said, who, who, just, just, just a minute, just a minute, Dionne. I, I wanna correct, I wanna...
We have Von talking.
Mayor, I wanna correct one thing, if you'll look at your agenda packet, you'll notice that this contract for this facility was executed on the fourteenth day of June, two thousand sixteen, not in August of two thousand sixteen. It's right there in your agenda packet, so I wanna correct that, first of all. Okay? Second of all, even at free, there was no league play at this facility this fall. Okay? Just so you'll know, there was no...
Okay.
No activity.
Mr. Mayor, if, even if we take, we take...
Let me, let me, let me make a couple of points before you go on. You know, I, I remember what, us meeting with you on at least two occasions, and, and we asked Christine to come up and kinda outline the financials that we had to have from you. This isn't an ask. Statutorily, we are required to account for every penny that flows through this city, and that's why we ask you to provide the financials in a certain method, in a certain methodology, in a certain format. It's my understanding, we still haven't gotten them. And, and so, no matter how much you've donated, it puts us in a spot where we have, we have no other choice except to terminate this contract. Now, if you wanna come back, uh, at a later date, and try to get this contract back, then that would be acceptable, but you're gonna have, you've got to follow our rules. We don't make the rules, the Oklahoma State Legislature makes the rules, and we have to follow, and we have to account for every single dime that flows through this city, especially when we're, we're giving you, essentially, the use of public property, and providing a certain level, although I think all of us agree, it could've been better, a certain level of service out there on that property. So, that's the issue. I, I congratulate you, I coached baseball for eight years. I congratulate you for being out there and, and, and doing the job you do, but, there's rules that you have to follow, and we don't make those up.
With that statement, like, twenty-two thousand dollars worth of equipment, we'll just say that, twenty-two thousand dollars, if I were to put that through OSYO, if I were to donate twenty-two thousand dollars worth to OSYO, right now, OSYO would own twenty-two thousand, let me finish, please, twenty-two thousand dollars worth of equipment. Now, with this contract being terminated, guess who owns that equipment now?
I have no idea.
The city of Midwest City would get that. I've learned at a lo- a young age that you c- control your sur- your surroundings. Me, by me providing and buying that with my own personal money, like the scoreboards, city of Mid- Midwest City on the termination of this contract can, cannot take those, those items. Those organizations, those, those teams, those kids get to keep those items.
But it's hard to believe that there were no other expenditures for the club, other than that equipment that you purchased and donated. I, I mean...
Who bought the insurance, Dionne? Who bought the, we, we have, we have a, we have an insurance policy that's in the name of the club.
I paid for that through myself, so...
You paid that?
So, that's my bene- that, that is my benefit, is that I use my...
That should be reflected on the financial statements, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, um, I'm gonna, I'm gonna cut off discussion on it. We, we've been through this before, and we've tried to help, we've tried to help you through this, and, and again, if you want to step back away from it, collectively get your act together, and then try again to get this contract back, that's fine and good, but right now, the agenda item on our agenda tonight is terminate the contract. I think we've heard enough, uh, with that being said, the Chair would entertain a motion.
Mayor, I just wanted to ask one question about the receipts that he said that he gave. Uh, Christie, did he give you some receipt?
Yeah.
Okay. So, what happened?
I need, I need some receipts, I need, I need some... Okay. He showed receipts from the, um, what, where was it? The calendar year sixteen financial statements. They didn't necessarily add up to what was on the statements, it was just a bunch of receipts. Um, so, I mean, it was really hard to, you still couldn't trace anything. That's when I've, I've been talking to him, about he had to run everything through a club bank account and open a blank account, and, so that we could trace it and see it. To date, that still hasn't been done, there's no plu- club, club bank account that we're running those things through, so that we can see it, so...
So, he was needing to get a personal, if he's gonna donate the money, he needs to get a personal account.
But we talked about this in August, that's, that, when we left here in August, that was my, what we thought was gonna happen, is that he would open a, account, and if he'd talked to us about what your plans were, I could've told you, that wouldn't have worked.
Okay, once again, um, discussions terminated, and the Chair would entertain a motion.
I'd like to just say one thing real quick, and my hat's off to you, I mean, it's, it's awesome that you've spent that much time and, and...
I thank you, thank you very much.
I hope you're understanding what Matt's saying, if legally, I don't know the legalese and all that stuff, but, we're, I, I feel like I'm in a, kind of a catch-twenty-two, I, and I was telling, I think, Von or somebody earlier, you know, you know football, your heart's in it, you know, maybe a CPA could do a better job on the book side, but he may not help the kids as much in football, so I, I appreciate what you're doing, and I think we all do, but just listen to what Matt's saying, if we have to terminate it, I mean, I would favor you to come back, it's just, it's a shame you can't get more help, and we can't get more help from the city to make this a stronger program, and, uh, some light has came to it, and it looks like we're in this situation, not just because, I mean, it's not all, it's, you know, you're, you're taking on a lot, but I feel for you.
Mr. Mayor, I just, I, I accept whatever you, whatever it is, I accept. Problem that is this, I just would like to, I would like time to put a packet together, submit it, submit a packet to you with all my personal, personal spending. Also, I have a bunch of emails that I've asked, "Hey, can we, can I concrete the cement pads? I'll pay for it." On the contract lease, it says that I had to get permission, on emails, saying, "Oh, you, we're not gonna do that, we're, we got bigger plans, this and that. Can I, can I pay for it to get cement sidewalks for the handicap? No, we don't need to do that, let's wait." There's stuff that I offered to pay for, for myself, and got shut down by the city. Now, with that saying, with that saying, Oklahoma Spartans Youth Club is not gonna pay for sidewalks, but for me to make that facility what I said I was gonna originally do, I knew that I'd have to come out of my own pocket for it, which, and the same thing, was the promise, the dream, the dream of, "Oh, we're gonna get this old new complex, and a guy like you," but nobody in, in Oklahoma City's up playing on a national level. I sent Fran the national information of one of our teams going to Florida playing the Nationals. For the first time in like fifteen years, we got a team ranked nationally, that's on a na- and we're having combines, youth combines, I mean, spring tackle football, that's unheard of here, spring tackle football for free. We had a team from Ki- from Mexico National Team come down, unheard of. If you ask Holiday Inn last Au- August, we had ninety rooms rented for our August tournament at the Holiday Inn.
And again, I, I'll, I'll mirror what, what, uh, Councilman Moore said, uh, you know, we applaud you for your effort, but again, going back to what I said before, we've got legal responsibilities to our citizens to provide adequate documentation on what we do in the city. Now, the reason you were shut down on a lot of those projects is because we had a bigger project coming down the pike, and we didn't need to make those improvements to Telstar. And, and so, once again, you can provide me with any documentation that you want, and I would be glad to sit down and look at it, but the bottom line is, tonight's business is that we've got an agenda item to terminate the contract a- again, and then, if you want to put a package together and come back at us, when we have better facilities available to you, then that would be welcome. So, with that being said, once again, the Chair would entertain a motion.
Motion to terminate the contract.
Do I have a second? I have a motion and a second, any further discussion?
Can we have a roll vote?
Yes, ma'am, sure can. And City Clerk, can you conduct a roll call vote, please?
Ward one.
Aye.
Two.
Aye.
Three. Four. Five.
Nay.
Six. Mayor.
The mayor votes aye. Sir, again, appre- we appreciate your hard work. If you decide to come back at us and try to get another contract, please, I'm asking you, please, follow the rules, and we won't, and we'll never have this discussion again.
One, couple questions.
Okay.
The, uh, the letter, the written up termination, who, where, where was that from?
That will be coming from the Parks and Recreations.
Okay, and the response to that termination, I, I'm understanding on the contract, I have thirty days to respond to that?
Yes, sir, you sure can.
I think under the terms, uh, of the con- of the lease, the termination, I don't believe you have a, have a, if it was a, if it was a breach, there was an appeal. On a termination, there's no appeal.
So, so basically, you get to walk out of here with a clean slate tonight. And, and, and try to get together with some folks that can help you out in that, and come back at us and try it again, and we'll consider it.
So as far as my personal items at the field, how, how long do I, do I still have those thirty days of, from written notice time to retrieve my personal items?
Okay.
Thank you, Vaughn.
Thank you, Vaughn.
Thank you, Mr. Williams, thank you so very much for all the hard work you have done. We look, I look forward to seeing you again.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay, ladies and gentlemen, we move into our new business public discussion, does anyone have anything to bring before the council? That being said, there is one item for further information, uh, on the agenda. Two items on the, for, for further information on the agenda.
The, uh, the first item is a draft ordinance, uh, involving establishing a mechanism to temporarily waive the, uh, animal adoption fees at the animal shelter under certain conditions. Uh, Councilman, Councilperson Eads requested, uh, trying to address that, that particular issue. And the second one is a draft ordinance involving the, um, I'll, I'll let you do that, Heather.
This is discussion and consideration of passing an ordinance amending Midwest City Code, Chapter twenty-eight, for the offenses against property, Section twenty-eight dash fifty-seven point one, false checks, to include a penalty for false checks with a value of up to one thousand for single offenses, and false checks with a value of up to two thousand in the aggregate for multiple checks. Both of those are now misdemeanors under the state statute. Previously, it was only up to five hundred dollars, and this ordinance brings us into compliance with the new state, uh, limits.
And these are just simply further information items, they will be on the regular, regular docket at the next council meeting for action.
We do have an executive session scheduled, uh, with this agenda. I would ask the council's indulgence into allowing us to recess and handle the other two dockets or, or agendas.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We are now in recess of the Midwest City Council Agenda. I would call to order the Midwest City Municipal Authority. We do have a consent agenda, and these items are placed on the consent agenda so the trustees, by unanimous consent, can approve routine agenda items by one motion. If any item proposed does not meet with the approval of all trustees or members of the audience, wish to discuss an item, be removed and heard in regular order. With that being said, I would entertain a motion.
Move to approve.
I have a motion and a second, any further discussion? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstention, motion carries. Ladies and gentlemen, we move into the new business public discussion of the Midwest City Municipal Authority Agenda. Does anyone have anything to bring before the authority? Hearing none, we are hereby adjourned. I call to order the Midwest City- Same thing. We do have an executive session, and again, I would ask the council's indulgence to, uh-
Move to adjourn.
Adjourn, and, uh-
Uh, recess.
Or recess and, and come back to this.
One more time, move to recess.
To recess.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstention, motion carries. Now I call to order the Midwest City Memorial Hospital Authority. We do have two discussion, three discussion items on this.
First item is discussion consideration of approving the minutes of the regular meeting of February twelfth, twenty nineteen as submitted.
Move to approve.
I have a motion and a second, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstention, motion carries. Next discussion item?
Uh, this is discussion and consideration of action to reallocate assets, change fund managers, or make changes in the statement of investment policy, guidelines, and objectives. No actions necessary on this. And the third item, you all really don't want me to read this entire-
No, we don't.
Item, do you? This is discussion consideration of taking action on, on the following recommendations hereby made by the Trust Board of Grantors for the qualified twenty eighteen, nineteen grant application, and there are, Jill, how many? Okay, there, there's somewhere around twenty grants that have been identified a- as being recommended by the Board of Grantors, and then authorizing distribution of the funds hereby approved by the FY twenty eighteen, nineteen, in the amount of not to exceed five hundred thousand dollars, and to further recommend and approve such modifications of the grant recipient agreement as recommended by legal counsel.
Okay, my question is on the last part of that, regarding the recommendation and approval of modifications of the grant recipient agreement as recommended by legal counsel.
Yes, ma'am.
What is it?
With the, um, somewhat different approach on looking at, at what qualified and what didn't qualify, um, we established or used the benchmark of the twenty-year for property. And we wanted a mechanism to be able to, if, if for some reason, a piece of equipment was purchased with a life expectancy of twenty years, and after five years, the, uh, the applicant chose to not want to use that piece of equipment anymore, we wanted the ability to be able to, uh, to be able to go get that piece of equipment. And so, um, the, the recipient agreement was rewritten in order to address that. John, is there, you wa-
Don't look at me, I haven't seen it.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
The, the precise changes are contained in your council packet with a so-called red line, and it's one of the very last, in fact, it is the last page in this particular portion of, uh, of your packet, and it ha- it's a red line that shows precise-
Okay, so to put this by example, John, I'm gonna look at you or Heather, either one, but, so for example, of the current grants proposed for approval, we have a rescue boat for Midwest City Fire for three thousand four hundred and forty-nine dollars. So it has to be accepted that it is to be implemented and used over a twenty-year period to be approved for the grant program. So that being said, if within the twenty years, Chief Norton decides we need a bigger rescue boat, or this one isn't sufficient, or whatever the case may be, type of thing, and we want to put in a new grant application and replace it, then the board has the ability to go back and retrieve the rescue boat that was purchased in twenty nineteen at the cost of three thousand four hundred and forty-nine dollars. Am I understanding that correctly? Okay. So... I guess it just boggles my mind that we're giving grants, and we're giving this money away, and the purpose, as I understand it, of this entire program was to give these things to improve our community, but then we're gonna retain the right to claw it back. Well, actually, the hospital authority, correct? Okay.
So we would, we would retain the right to go back and get that property and repurpose it in any way we see fit. So is there, there any further discussion on this?
So, everything, uh, so when someone applied for a grant, one of the, uh, applied for the hospital authority grants, whatever they apply for has to have the, uh, life expansion of twenty years, so if not, uh- it would-
If it's property.
Property.
If it's property, if it's a program, it does not have to have twenty years.
Okay. So, I noticed that, uh, there's a lot of like, some schools and such with band equipment and all of that, it has to have the life expansi- I mean, expects, expectancy, uh, expectation of twenty years, correct?
Correct.
If you've been to the Midwest City High School band room lately, I can assure you that virtually every piece of equipment in that place has been there at least fifteen years, if not twenty-five years.
That's not twenty years, that's not twenty years.
But, but we're still using it, that's my point. So in fairness, I, I think it's a safe bet.
I think that's a, I think this, this is just a method to solidify the grant process, make it a little bit more valid, and ensure that if in fact, something changes after, and, and it often does, that we do have the ability to pull that equipment back and, uh, and, uh, and repurpose it, and in the, being a band parent for twelve years, yes, uh, and I will, I'm gonna put a plug in for you on this, that about four percent of the school budget goes to arts, and very little less than that goes toward the band and, and vocal music, so, uh, this is a well worthwhile program, so, does anybody have any more questions for John, or?
I just wanna thank John and Heather, and I apologize, I didn't see this before, and I did talk to Pat this afternoon and ask him because I didn't understand where it was coming from, and so, since we were both lost, it didn't help, but my apologies, thank you both, and thank you for the efforts on that, I think it's, thank you.
Thank you.
And I have another question too, so, um, I just wanna make sure that, uh, in the grant, in the process, the grantors, when they start looking at these grants, they gonna have to really value whatever property is being purchased and make sure it has that expectancy of the twenty years, or how is that going to, how are they going to fund that in? Is that what, one question, uh, it's gonna be, have to be, uh, put into that particular clause, the twenty years?
John-
Of course, it'd be more expensive, but-
Let, let me try, let me try to-
Right.
Respond to that. That, um, that, and, and it was John and Heather and I that sat down and did a prelim- preliminary assessment on all the grant applications to evaluate whether, especially on the property, whether, whether it was, whether it would qualify or, or not, and, and there were, there were, there were many that were kicked out, and then there were some that we, that we drug the, in, in the case of city applications, we drug the department heads in and said, okay, tell me whether this is gonna last twenty years or not, because we really couldn't tell. And, and, and so, it, it's, it's not a perfect science at all, but we did the best that we could, and, and I think the BOG, uh, took that information and, and went forward. Having, having said all that, you know, during the, during the last process that we went through with, with, uh, amending the trust indenture, there were things that we all, John and, and I and Tim, all saw as, oh, boy, this could be a little, th- th- this is a li- this one's, isn't as clear as we would like it, and so, we all kinda made a mental note to ourselves that we would, after we got through that last update, that we would probably, it would be valuable for us to come back again. It's a complicated process because it involves a trust indenture amendment, which means that we are going to you all, and we're going to the Chamber of Commerce, and so, everybody sees things a little differently, but the twenty-year property, uh, determination is certainly one, and we talked with the Board of Grantors last night, and I think they too are concerned about the twenty years and property. And so, what we promised to them, and I'll promise to you all, and i- is that we're gonna get back together and we're gonna, gonna see if we can, uh, can, can tweak and wordsmith that, that particular subject, and perhaps some other ones that need to be cleaned up in order to, to, um, uh, to improve the process, so.
Mr. Henson, one, one recommendation that I, I, I would ask that you guys look at, if it's even possible, and I, and I understand the twenty-year life expectancy, I think that's, that's a good idea, however, there, with technology today, in the, you know, the schools have put in for computers, and we granted them last year, if, if we have this in there, twenty years, and I don't know if there's a way you guys can write it so that it, because I think we're cutting the schools completely out of, or anybody out of applying for computers if we put a twenty-year timeframe on it, and, and that may be the road that we wanna go down, I don't think it is, because computers, what, three years, five years at the most, and I think-
Well, last year, when, just to, you know, when we had the commentary about the request for computers last year, it was, they're supposed to be replaced on a five-year basis, the computers that they were asking to replace were in excess of seven years, and the schools were still using them. So in fairness, I mean, I think that if there is an exception for technology, computers, computer equipment, et cetera, I mean, I think that would be a welcome thing to bring some flexibility to what we can do to add to our community, as well as, you know, if you wanna consider software programs officially as property versus, it's really a license, but I mean, it's, John, I mean, it, the point is, we've had requests too for software programs in the past, as I recall, even from within the city, so, I mean, I think that we need to carve out.
Yes, and that, that's, that's, that, that is the way to go at it. Certain things don't need to be subject to the twenty years at all. Things like computers, technology, um, they, things that it's most worthwhile to provide, but they're not gonna last twenty years.
Right. So how, so that's, you know, that's exactly what I was talking about, you know? And so, you're saying that you, you all need to tweak that? So are you all gonna do a streamline of what can be five years?
We're, we're gonna make, we're gonna make, give, give the old college trial.
Okay then, well, I guess we need to just, we're gonna vote on this.
That, that being said, I would move, Ms. Ellen, you were finished, right? I'm sorry. I, I would move to approve this entire list of proposed grants.
Second.
I have a motion, and I have a second.
And approve the revised recipient.
Yes sir, and, and approve the other language noted below, um, including the modifications to the grant recipient agreement as recommended by legal counsel.
I'm assuming the Board of Grantors has already approved that, right?
Yes, they did last night.
Second.
Okay, well, I have a motion and a second. City Clerk, did you make note of the, uh, motion? Okay. I have a motion and a second. All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstention, motion carries. Ladies and gentlemen, now we move into the public discussion, new business of our authority agenda. Does anyone have any, anything to bring before the authority? Hearing none, we are hereby adjourned.
Appreciate it, John, good job.
And I have lost total control. I had control.
Look, Mayor, you have ducks, but they are not in a row, I can assure you.
That's right.
I just gavelled you.
Would you like a motion to resume?
Okay.
City Council Agenda?
Second.
Motion to resume also the municipal authority agenda, both on executive sessions.
Okay, I have a motion to reconvene on the council authority and the trust authority. All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstention. Now, uh, we do need a motion to go into executive session.
Motion to go into executive session.
Second.
Motion and a second, all in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. Ladies and gentlemen, we're gonna be going into executive session, we will not, we will not return to council chambers. Thank you for being here this evening.